We're moving into item 3.7 for information. Presentation of the 2018-19 general operating budget. Mr. Cooper?
Well, good evening. As you know, at this time every year, I come to you with the budget for the next year. I think I'd like to start with just a quick review of your timeline and where you're at there. We did our budget workshop back on the 16th of April. Tonight, we're here for the proposal or the proposed 1819 budget and then the public hearing to follow directly after. And then again, we meet twice in June for the board. You meet again on June 25th. You'll do two actions there. Sometimes it gets confusing, but we will adopt this 1819 budget and you will approve the final budget amendment to 1718. And of course, it just starts the cycle then because then the audit will happen in the summer and we'll start on and move forward. And of course, the 1819 budget will also reflect any adjustments we need along the way. Always like to remind people the budget's not really advisory in nature. For a public entity, the state requires we have it in by July 1st. It also requires that we reflect where do we get our resources from, where's the revenue coming from, and how we're spending it. So anytime there's a change along the way, whether we get a grant someplace along the way, we do amendments. And typically, as you know, we do those in March and in June. And then, of course, the audit is our final say when we get all finished there. All right, well, one of the most important things we have to do at a budget is to set the millage rates. And while the first one's not a surprise, 18 mills on the non-home, excuse me, on a non-homestead property is what we've been levying for a long time here, and it's what you can levy. The next one, the 1.6814 mills on homestead, that's our hold harmless millage. If you recall, set back when Prop. 8 came in, you could raise $415.31 a student. So there's two things that I have to do every year, and that is take the current taxable value, have to take the estimate of the number of students we have, and figure out how much, how many mills we can levy. Every year, we can come back and adjust that because, of course, it's an estimate, both on the taxable value when you're doing this in June or May, and again, when you get into the school year, and of course, the number of students will be a factor. The other thing that's been a factor lately is the personal property tax, which is slowly being removed from what's the taxable value. And when that happens, it changes a little bit. This happens to be slightly down from a year ago. It was at 1.7100. Of course, in the city, all these millage rates get split in half because, well, as you recall, within the city limits, we do two tax levies, summer and the winter. And in the county, allied county areas, we just do it once a year in the winter. The other thing is our bond millage rate. If you remember, it started at 2.95, went to 284. This year, it's at 272, and it's going to remain at 272. We don't, I'm no expert at that. We have financial advisors that look at where we are. They look at the taxable value and how much it's grown. They know where we stand with the bond and the repayment of the bond, and then they determine what that millage rate is that you should issue for that year. So this one happens to be the same. If looking at the material they sent me, I would just tell you that the taxable value ------------ That's not a bad thing because, as you know, when that personal property tax comes out, that actually, for a long time, they were predicting it would cause the taxable values to drop. The real property is kind of catching up with it. So it's growing. I think it was 0.35%, though, but that's not, not huge. So it's the exact same bond rate. And again, that would be split, just like anything in the city is. So those are the millage rates that we have in this bond or in this budget, excuse me. There's some major assumptions that we have to make all the time. And the first one's with, of course, the part of the formula we don't control, and that's the state aid. We do know they're very close, but like close is like tomorrow, is what I heard, which doesn't help us when we're meeting tonight.
Mm-hmm.
So the state aid formula, our major assumptions from the state is it will be a 2X formula. I used 115 per student, which would take us to $8,526 a student. The 115, looks like it will be 120 when the budget finally goes through. That's a small enough amount. When we get to adjustment time, we'll just adjust it. But it looks like it might be $5 more per student when the state finishes with that. Not that the 20M funding rolled in means much to anybody, but once in a while, as we go through this, we get so much per pupil, but part of it is sometimes made up out of another fund, this 20M. And it's due to a kind of a complicated formula, but it was where inflation was not going to allow us to get the same increase this past year as other school districts would get. And so they put the extra funding, which happened to be $6 a student. It's only important when they don't leave it in there. And we've experienced that in the past a couple of times where they've put it in that way and then said, oh, by the way, you don't get to keep that. And so the next year, when everyone else is getting the increase, you don't get the same amount because you're not adding it on to the same. So the big difference here is whether they consider us making $8,405 a year per student this year or is it 8,411? And they rolled that in. So that $6 per student stays with us. So it is kind of important. There's no change in shared time or our non-public K funding. That could have meant 30,000 or 40,000, but it looks like they're not going to touch that. We do provide some services to our non-public parochial schools, and there was a lot of talk early on that they would not allow us to do kindergarten anymore. Kindergarten's been one of those outside of the public schools where, for a long time, they wouldn't let us do it, then they let us do it. So it's been one of those going back and forth. The other part of state aid is categorical. Those are in categories of where they give you funding. Last year, if you remember, at the start of the year, we really didn't know where we stood on 31A, but by October, we knew. We're expecting the same thing. It's 30% of what we'd normally get because we're a hold harmless district. So if, when you see the amount of money, which last year, 500, I think, Brian, 500, yeah, just, just a little bit more than 500,000, that's about 30% of what, if we looked at all of it and did the formula, we, we would receive if we weren't a hold harmless district, but we expect that to stay. And the other thing that got added late last year, after we had already put a budget in, was the high school per pupil bonus. They added $25 per high school student to the funding mechanism, and that's staying. So we have both those. Other major revenue assumptions on the state aid, and again, not to, there are enough numbers that it would scare you here, but these two, the 147s, deal with the retirement. And the state's done a couple of different things. There's a 1 and a 2, 147A1 and 147A2. And then there's 147C1 and 147C2. In essence, one of them caps it, so we only have to pay up to a certain amount. The other one is like an assist or has to help pay the parts we have to. And then they added a couple in the last couple of years. One that helped pay because the rate of return has been changed at the state level, and so they needed to pay that off. And the other one, which is no longer there, the 147C was a one-time only, and that had to do with the buyout the state did increased retirement, I think it was three or four years ago now, when the state changed their multiplier. So they're still there. It's always important. Doesn't mean a whole lot to everyone else, but it, that was one of the issues until the state stepped in that was causing budgets a lot of problem, was the retirement system and the percentage that districts were having to put in. So them capping it, them supplying the money, if those two categoricals ever went away, it would be very noticeable in school districts across the state. So it's important to know there's, there's a lot of money there. They're in and out monies. In other words, they give it to us, and then we pay back to them for the retirement. But it's better than them not giving it to us.
Mm-hmm.
So just, it's important to keep that in mind. It looks like, though, this latest conference looks like they might add a couple of these back in, but there was no MySTEM or the 104D grant or the 35A, which is, or the literacy, but it looks like they might be funding those to some level. We'll have to add those at amendment time, but it wasn't very clear. The three different branches, the Senate, the House, and the executive were not in agreement on, on what should happen with those. Of course, we have to make some assumptions on the revenue on our own. And the other big factor is not just the funding per pupil, but it's the enrollment. So of course, we do use consultants, and the consultants are telling us that we should lose approximately 53 students, that we would have a blended count of 7,634. You know, the last couple of years, the consultant's been wrong in a good way for us. We've had more students than that. I really do hope the trend continues. It's not a bad one.
Mm-hmm.
But you, you've been here long enough, you've seen it go the other way, too. This is just their best prediction of, of where we should be. And again, it's, it's, the birth rates aren't changing very, very much, and they have decreased in the last few years, and that's, that's what you're seeing. But that's where we're at. There were trig grant, technology grants in there, and we've basically spent all those, especially when the state was changing to online testing. They were providing a lot of money that we were able to use, and of course, that's now done, so we don't have any. The one thing that is nice, we have been increasing our interest revenue. It's coming back. Thought it was a long time ago, but for a long time, the, the return you could get on your money was not very good. So you're seeing, I know what's not a whole lot, at least wanted to let you know that, you know, it's 65,000 more than we, we've been getting in the past. So it is growing what you can get on your money as it sits and, and waits. And I also wanted to put in there the passage of the countywide enhancement millage. While this one coming up really would affect the following time, I do think it's important to let everybody know that, that is an assumption. It's a, it's a pretty good size of money, anywhere from 3.5 to 4 million as far as Midland is concerned itself. And of course, the other county schools are also not getting that much money because it's done on a per pupil basis kind of thing and your percentages, but it is an important part of what we do. So a couple of things, just to give you some background on it. Again, with those revenue things, I just wanted to show you the enrollment to give a little history. And of course, I provided that, too, in the budget narrative, so you could see it. But basically, I've left 2008-9 there because that's the last year we got 20J. So it's kind of interesting to go back to that time. That's when a lot of the financial things started to hit us a little bit. And look at enrollment. Again, 1819's an estimate based on everything we know. I think you'll see special ed stayed somewhat consistent. Secondary has had to take some of that drop that's been coming through the elementary schools for quite a while. I think the one interesting thing is if you look at between '16, '17, and '17, '18, and wondering this year, how did we beat the estimates? Because as you remember, we were supposed to lose about 56 kids. You'll see that the elementary enrollment actually went up, which is a little unusual, but I think with opening new schools and doing the new construction ------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------------ Wow. Thank you, Bob. You're welcome.
It was good to go over this in FFO and get a lot of questions asked as well, and then the, all the slides and detail were in the, the board packet, which we've had for a while to really look over. So I appreciate all your work and getting that information out to us.
Don't do it alone. I always want to tell you that the business office, with Lori Holder being everybody back there, they're the ones that do all the, all the hard work and pull us through that with just a very few people doing, doing a lot of work back there.
Thanks, Lori.
Yes. Well, now I believe we go into public hearing for this.
Yep.
And...
Correct.
I had something I had to read, I believe.
I'll go ahead and read from the June 11th letter for the operating budget.
Sure.
Michigan Public Act 621 of 1978. The Uniform Budgeting Act requires all local governments to adopt balanced budget in a format specified by the state before July 1st of each year. In addition, Public Act 4 of 1995 also requires a local unit of government to hold a public hearing on its proposed budget and state in part that property tax millage rate proposed to be levied to support the proposed budget will be subject of the hearing. The initial portion of the June 11th board meeting has been designated as a public hearing on the PA 621 budget. Do I have anyone that would like to come forward and speak on behalf of the budget? No one? Okay. Okay.